Good start. It's really 6:59. Call to order. I'm Tim Strasburg. This is the Town of Brookfield Planning Board meeting for Monday, February 8th, 2021. I'm Tim Strasburg. Terry Ward here. They can come over. Present. John Mayer.
Here.
Rick Surratt.
Present.
We're all here. Do we have any public comments tonight? No public comments, no correspondence. Review and possible approval of minutes from January 11th, 2021.
Will we accept the minutes as written?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes from January 11th, 2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they're accepted. Skill building, I sent out Article 3 of our zoning ordinance titled General Provisions, of which there's A through J miscellaneous items. Does everybody have an opportunity to look it over? And does anyone have any questions or thoughts or comments? None? No?
Manufactured housing.
Manufactured housing. Where's that in the general provisions?
I don't have it in front of me, Tim.
Oh. I think it's in, that's in...
That's in the master plan section.
No, it's not there. That's it?
That's a zoning, right?
Yes. Yep, Article 3. A is talking about junkyards, discarded waste. B is talking about, you know, property or shelter in building structure. They're on delect and badly damaged, dilactated condition. C is about the earth excavation regulations. D is about objectionable and curious by reason of production of emissions of odor, dust, smoke, refuse, matter, fumes. E is about signboards. F is about lumber operations. G is timber harvesting operations. Insolvent responsibility. H is landowners permission. Landowner permission for a town official or beyond their property. I is selectmen have to notify voters of logging. And J is any use of not specifically permitted is prohibited. Any use of not specifically permitted is prohibited. That's it?
That's it?
Yeah. So there's non-conforming use Article 4 was on there.
He sent me more than that. That's what I just read on and...
Let me see here.
Well, just what I just wanted to bring up is... We can't disallow them.
Right.
Because they have to conform to the same zoning that traditional structures conform to.
Yes.
Hence the zoning article on the warrant.
Yes.
But we can also create zones where they can go.
Yes.
I don't know if we want to talk about that at some point. I'll just let it rest.
About locations for manufactured housing? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I speak directly to the member?
Absolutely.
Remember, Sir Redd, why? I'm just wondering, what's the thought process behind wanting a specific zone for a... Are you talking about because of soil issues or what's the...
Well, I'm talking about some towns have parks for manufactured housing. And they allow you to put those into parks. We don't have any provision for that. Or in areas that are designated for workforce housing, that they're very expensive housing. And modern manufactured housing is conducive to the historic and agricultural spirit of the town.
Let's hold that thought.
Yeah.
And we'll bring it into the next item on the agenda. Let's just wrap up the general provisions.
Oh, we could... I just wanted to throw it out there.
No, that's good. No.
We don't have to have a further discussion of that.
Okay. I'm gonna get back to that. John, did you see anything in the general provisions? You have any questions?
Only thought something that stuck out in my head was letter B.
Yep.
On 109 going towards Wolfboro. There's that farmhouse with the large barn that's
Yes.
Falling in on itself.
Yes.
Wouldn't that apply to that?
It would, and I believe this is... We're addressing that.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
There's a couple sites in town that have been addressed similar to...
I think one of the snowstorms in the last two months, it got substantially worse, like the roof color. The whole roof came out.
Yep.
People worried that the front's gonna fall into the street. Yeah, couldn't it so close? Quite possibly.
It looked like they had that staging all set up to work on it. And that staging's been there for, what, 10 years?
Yeah.
Outside the building?
That's another problem too now.
Yeah, that's a big...
Did you see anything in the provisions you wanted?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to... Conversation about I. And this is mostly just a process question about the selectmen or their designation shall notify voters of the property to be logged in writing at the earliest date possible. Now, I know there's an intent to cut. In some towns that I videotaped, the selectmen announce intent to cuts. They announce the fact that, and they mention the map and lot number, et cetera. But I never hear it in Brookfield. So does this ordinance right here under I state that they have to be in writing tell the voters that logging is occurring?
Yes.
Okay, that is what it says.
Yeah. Misreading. Selectmen or their designation shall notify voters of the property to be logged in writing at earliest date possible following receipt of a notice of intent to cut and specified lot and parcel and street address if available.
I guess my question was, is I just don't recall that happening. It's not in our purview to enforce, it's by selectmen, but I just wanted to just put that out there.
Mr. Rich?
Why do you think it's in there?
Why do I think it's in here for it to be enforced?
Why do you think it's in there? Why do you think voters should be notified of logging? What do you think the rationale is behind that?
So you know that property that may have an effect on you is gonna be logged and stripped, perhaps? That it's gonna be logged?
It's gonna be noisy.
So?
Yeah, I'm not saying there's a problem with it. I'm just saying I don't recall this in writing occurring.
And I'm challenging, what's the value you add? Why not take it out? I mean, what's the value added to have that in here?
Doesn't really affect us at all.
Well, hon...
I don't...
Honestly, I agree.
I don't understand the history. I don't have no idea why it's in there. But I don't like, you know...
But you do have the ability to announce in public that somebody's applied for an intent to cut. So that could be the notification, but I just don't see this in writing occurring. So, I mean, has it ever happened? Because I don't recall it.
I don't remember it ever being, ever happened in writing.
Well, if Orlando knows that Jason Watt, big parts of land are gonna be logged, you know, maybe... Good to know that's happening so you can walk your line and make sure they don't log your land.
Maybe the only change I would say to do with I would be to go by the intent to cut application and mail the application or mail that to the voter or... Rather than in writing, I don't, because it's not happening. So if it's not being done, that means the selectmen aren't enforcing the ordinances. So it kind of has to be changed. If they start doing it...
However, Rick made a good point. Right? If you're cutting a parcel, it might be good to know they're gonna be cutting it in one of what you're lying. I mean, that's a different perspective on it. Are you back in the woods, you wanna make sure that you're not getting approached about it? Right? I think that's a good reason for doing it.
But if a landowner does not live on the property?
That's right. That's exactly right. I think with that perspective, I think it does have some value.
I'm just questioning the stipulation that it must be done in writing. What does that mean? Does that mean that you're gonna actually create another letter stating that the logging is being done?
Well, I think it means something else.
Well, I'm saying what you're doing should be reflected in the ordinance.
Or we should do it in the ordinance?
Yes. A good starting point.
Correct. Well, now we have the chance to make it most effective. I just don't think just in writing is effective. There should be something in here about the intent to cut application that the town or he uses to be the notification, I'm assuming.
Yeah, well, we get that from the state. That's a state form. Thought of.
Yeah, but it can be used as a notification. If I received an application in the mail that my neighbor was gonna cut, then I would know. But that's your notification to them. I don't, if you're not doing it now in writing, what are you doing? It sounds like you're not enforcing on the ordinance.
We're still...
Yeah. So I would say we should change it to something that's more, you know, practical, which... It already mentions the notice of intent to cut. But it doesn't say anything about at the earliest date possible following the...
I think I'm okay with the selectmen using their discretion as to how they notify the voters. I don't think that you need to spell out that they have to send the intent to cut because the intent to cut is probably gonna come from a logging operation, not their neighbor. So...
So what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, is that they should do with the ordinance says?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's move on.
Okay.
So just take out in writing?
We're not taking out anything. We're staying exactly as it's written.
Okay.
Anything, any change to the zoning, we have to go through the process that we just went through. We should be to
The warrant.
Have a warrant article. So I think it's satisfactory business. New, let's see, new business. I wanted to, Rich brought up a good point at the end of last meeting about what potential topics do we want to discuss and work on for this year, 2021. I don't know if, you know, people have any ideas or...
Well, we have the wireless, the wireless is one of these.
Yep, we've got three things on there right now. We have personal wireless service facility across six roads in Naster Plan.
I think that list right there is pretty good.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Okay.
And each one's gonna have a broad effect on things.
Okay. I didn't know if anybody...
We can always add to it if something comes up.
Of course.
So...
All right.
I think that's a pretty good sized bite to do.
All right. Move on then. Old business, personal wireless service facility. Go ahead and talk to us about Stephen Grill.
Steve Grill, I contacted him through, actually it was through LinkedIn. Back and forth a few times with emails. I believe I sent you the letter.
Yep, we have the letter.
Right here.
Yep.
Now, I wanted to discuss this more because, you know, this... I don't know if this stuff is gonna have to go out to bid. Or as a board, can we just, do we waive that? Or, I mean, it's below the threshold, the amount that he said. But I just don't know what process we're gonna use to have him come in here or do the work or consult. I don't know what the process is gonna be. It's just gonna have cost to...
Absolutely.
We didn't put any in the budget, did we? They're kind of a charge?
We have a legal budget.
Right. And he also said that he doesn't usually do municipalities. He usually does it for individual companies.
Right.
I don't know how that's gonna affect it, but...
Well, which isn't, it isn't a bad thing to get a consult?
Oh, no, I think at least get us pointed in the right direction, if nothing else.
Because, I mean, if he usually, you know, comports his his design of the ordinances around what a company would have or need, it makes more sense. But, you know, I just always worry about the conflict of interest. And I'm worried about, you know, is it being put out to bid or are you using it as just a consult? Or is he going to physically work on the ordinance? I don't know how far he wants this to go.
So I think, is everybody, you've read the letter?
I did, yeah. I'm just listening because I'm trying to understand all sorts.
Okay. Well, this will be due for both of us, so... So his initial fee to discuss his recommendations and observations, having reviewed our zoning, would be $500 if you were to do a video conference, then add $150 for him to travel here to be in person. So $650 to come and offer some advice and guidance.
Does he live Wolfboro?
Center Harbor. So then depending on what we want to do, whether we want to follow, work with him in the future, then it would be, he's expecting to $2,000. Neighborhood of $2,000 for him to do the drafting and everything. So from there, we'd be responsible for the process we just went through, which would be the warrant article review, public hearing.
To set aside a fund for this, right?
No, to actually enact it if we adopt the changes, if you may.
Oh, correct.
So... Rick?
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that Mitchell Group has some experience in this. And if we had our own attorney just look over our zoning for this thing and make recommendations as to what would modernize this and make it attractive to carriers today? Because it was written 30 years ago. And that might be a quick and dirty way to get our zoning up to date with our own attorney's recommendations. Also, once you get your zoning up to date, who's to say that someone's gonna come in even and put a tower in? You put in a tower because you want to pick up customers.
Right.
There's so few people in this little valley area, who pays a shit? Why are they gonna put a tower in just to pick up 300 cell phones? When they won't even run a cable down here to pick up 300 customers?
Well, depending on where they located the tower, they could pick up Middleton.
Maybe Middleton's okay already. They run down on the other side of the mountain.
Right. So I'm saying if the tower was on the mountain, they could pick up Wolfboro and a bunch of other communities, I would think.
Well, I'm speculating that those communities are already all picked up. The only place I have trouble with my cellphone and communication is right here. I go to Wakefield, I'm fine. I go to Wolfboro, I'm fine. I go to Middleton, I'm fine. So I'm thinking that this little area here, I'm sorry to say, but I don't think they're interested in us. They won't even run cable through the town. Why would they put a tower up there to service us? Because they invest in infrastructure to make money from customers. They're trying to reach customers.
Yeah.
And they put a tower up there and they don't reach any customers. It's not what they're at. That's what I'm saying.
See, this also has to do with wireless broadband companies also. It's not just cell phones.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying that what we could do is we could have, like, Hub 66. It used to be Grasshopper. That's what services Tamworth with wireless broadband. They have power that they are using and people point their dish to it and they get wireless and stuff. Now, I don't know if that's something that the Mitchell Group would look into, but the ordinance should... The ordinance is so old, it doesn't even mention wireless broadband. So we could actually, and obviously why it would cost us any money to have Hub 66 come in and just explain their business. And explain, you know, how there are other wireless broadband companies that use towers. You know, so I don't know if it's just only for, you know, for cellphone use.
Well, I'll just speculate that the time our zoning was written, cell phones were branded. People resisted the change, afraid of towers showing up and et cetera, et cetera. And they made it very restricted because they didn't know. Now we know.
Yep, another question. The Mitchell Group, just for the public that doesn't know, who is the Mitchell Group?
They're the municipal attorneys at the time.
So it's Laura Spector, it's the, so that's the company she works for?
Yes.
I can certainly reach out to her and start a discussion on that. And see what, did her opinion take on updating what it would take? That's One Avenue, we can go in. And I can do that.
I'll just throw her a call, see if she comes back.
Yep.
Might be cheaper to get this guy to come up with a...
Yep.
Did he say the first consult was 500?
Yes.
Is that what it was?
Yep.
And then 2,000 to do the rest?
Yeah.
There'll be mileage too, though, it'd be a super back and forth, I believe. 150 each time or something?
150 bucks.
So I was reading in the Conway Daily Sun about Conway is going through adding, Verizon's adding another tower in the downtown area. And it's primarily just to service the peak, the man that occurs on a Saturday and Sunday afternoon. Because their system is completely overloaded from the tower that's on Cranwell.
I was gonna say, isn't there a tower on Cranwell that's on the archery?
Yep. So they're putting in one that's tree level, that's gonna be in the neighborhood. And it's apparently, you know, because demand is so high, it justifies their needs, but it seems...
They get a bunch of hotels in there now and everything.
Yes.
It's a change.
Yeah, that's crazy. There's one going into... Oh, and even the second one, you go left, go down 16. If you drive straight going towards Fryborough, there's one right there on the left field.
Yep. Yep.
See, I'm curious about how 5G, I mean, it's not in this area yet, but it's obviously gonna come down the pipe, so... I don't know how much the ordinance, the ordinance is, obviously would affect that to 5G stuff. Because those are different distances. They're not like...
Yeah, we'll be down in the belly before you see 5G or I.
Yeah. Really?
We're not even covered for 4G.
You don't have 4G?
Well, as far as action items, let me reach out to Laura and see what it takes through the Mitchell Group to get some advice on this. And for now, we'll table Mr. Grill and we'll come back in March and have another discussion about this. Does that sound to everybody?
It's good. If we want to look at over again over the month, that's a lot of pages.
Yes.
It's like 20, isn't it?
Yeah.
Fun.
Yeah.
You could probably get that down on one page.
Not if a lawyer's writing it, right?
Yeah.
See, Mr. Chairman, what doesn't make any sense is the cost. I mean, Tamworth spent, you know, almost $9,000 markers. How, why would this be so different?
I don't know. And why did Wolfboro spend five figures on theirs, right?
I got it.
All right, let's move on to Building on Costex Roads.
I'm sorry, I ain't got nothing.
All right, we'll move on.
But I have a comment.
All right.
Is that Osapi, they also allow in other towns too. So I've got my feelers out to try to get their ordinances and how they handle it.
Okay.
How Osapi handles it. But I think Wakefield would be where to go and that's where I'm still going with that direction.
That's fine. The work you did with Stephen Grill there is excellent. So thank you for doing that and taking care of that.
Can I go back to the last agenda item for one second?
Absolutely, yep.
Would it be appropriate for me to contact Hub 66? At Sales Rec or somebody, just to have them come here for a discussion about that?
Well, I wonder if we have a discussion, we don't have a plan, right? So what, I mean, we're not deciding that we want to organize a committee for wireless internet in town and researching what it's gonna take, right? We're just kinda, so it seems like a bit too far of a step.
What about some paperwork? What about if I can email the group what Tamworth uses? How they use Hub 66, how they started it and the history of that, just so we have an idea.
I think that would be great. I think that educational aspect of it would be very beneficial.
Well, if someone wants to come in here and pitch it, I mean, we'll just have more knowledge about an alternative.
Yep, but I think we, you know, if we can get information on this. I don't know anything about it, so it'd be nice to sit down and be able to read and catch up on it. And then we'll see where we are next month and maybe we'll bring them in depending on where we end up with our ordinance exploration with lawyers.
I'm always thinking wireless broadband because that's what people are complaining about in this town is that there's, it's very spotty.
Yep. So we're gonna jump over the Building on Costexroads and move on to the master plan, which is review sections 2.8 and 2.09. 2.08 is Housing Policies and Implementation Strategies. So this is the section, Rick, that had all the manufactured housing.
You were right.
Ah, that's okay.
You were right. And I'm all open.
I know, it's all right. I think it'll be a good discussion piece. I was reading over, we'll get down to it, the RSA 67432 today. So let's just go, I mean, these are really short sections. Listen, 2.09 is a real page turner. So let's, we'll go from section through section. Introduction, I don't see anything wrong with this. What we want, Brookfield desires to allow for modest growth in its housing stock and meet its reasonable share of the regional affordable housing need in a manner compatible with the town's rural character. I feel like that kind of speaks to what we, all the edits we've been making so far throughout.
Yeah, I mean, it's simple.
Okay.
That's what we're trying to do, is simplify this thing too.
Yep. C, what we want, commitments. One, quality housing, the town's quality housing stock will be preserved and promoted. Two, seasonal home conversions. The town will assure that seasonal homes that are converted to year-round use meet all current building code standards and that the septic system is adequate for full-time occupancy. These standards should comply with the state statutes and administrative codes for state review of septic systems for seasonal dwellings when the unit is converted or expanded.
That happens.
I'm sure it happens. I was wondering if there was an RSA that drove this? Or was this just a...
Well, the, what's the title, title part? Well, the, the, what's the title, title part? The septic. That's, that's statewide, when you convert a structure or you can't replace a light kind anymore, you need a plan now. So, it's pretty much covered, you know, once, if you're gonna expand a summer residence, you've gotta have a certain one-bedroom septic tank in there, so it just happens.
Yep.
Well, that statement says it.
Yep.
And it has to be current, according to standards.
Yep.
Uh, is the second sentence really redundant for us, do you think? Just saying the same thing over again?
Well, I think it's, it's defaulting to the state guidelines in case of the change. Uh, affordable housing, Brookfield desires to create a reasonable number of affordable housing opportunities so that persons of all income levels can afford to live in town. All new units, however, should be built in a manner consistent with Brookfield's desire to remain a rural community. Specific affordable housing policies shall include, but not necessarily be limited to, the following. Allow accessory apartments, allow, be, allow manufactured housing consistent with RSA six seventy-four thirty-two. That's that second. So, we don't have zoning for ADUs. We're discussing that.
Yeah, we do.
We do, yes.
They have to be attached.
Oh, right, that's right. So, may, I was wondering if this should go from accessory apartments to accessory dwelling units.
It would be consistent.
So, just change the wording on A?
Yep. So, I read through six seventy-four thirty-two, and that's a pretty broad interpretation of manufactured housing. This, it refers to manufactured housing as being a viable, um, process to having it conventionally built on-site, right? So, if you, you know, can buy a cave and have it made in three or four sections and have it shipped, or a ranch, and have it shipped, put on a foundation, but also references, um, uh, mobile homes.
The manufactured housing terminology, my interpretation is that's metal house. The, the other one is modular.
Right.
Those, those are stick built in a factory and delivered and brought on a real foundation.
But they don't make reference to modular housing in, in the RSA, talk about manufactured, which describes like a modular house. So, that's where I think it's a very, manufactured housing has a very broad definition. I don't know.
Well, it would still have, I mean, building codes, I mean...
Right, exactly.
So, we're covered there, and plus with the new foundation requirement, you know, we'll have it covered there. And I'm sure all, even all the manufactured homes now are all two-by-six construction, I would think, for insulation bedding. I can't imagine we'd get a two-by-four. A manufactured home now, if you wanted one, I don't even think, they probably, they don't even make them, because they wouldn't meet the insulation standards for most towns.
What are you talking about? The old west coast homes?
The old what?
The old west hills with the two-by-three walls?
The two-by-four, yeah.
Made down on blastout?
Yeah, but, I mean, that stuff doesn't exist anymore, really, I mean...
Yeah, they do, they just put on a lot, that block, you're sold.
But that's all two-by-six, those exterior walls.
Yeah. We allow two-by-fours, we can split them two-by-four.
Well, you can't get R nineteen now, you can't get a two-by-four wall.
Yeah. Well, we got us, it's, it's a stick-built house built in a factory. We deliver it into the four sections of, depending on our thinking houses. It's a real house.
I've been inside that one, it actually looked pretty nice.
My, my comment would be, every, every time it seems we refer to an RSA, the RSA changes in a way we didn't expect, so we get trapped. If we know what we want in that paragraph, why don't we say it? And if we want stick built, if we want modular, if we want whatever, then put it in there. That's how we go trapped on that slab, right? The slab down the road, because the RSA changed, and we referenced the RSA. So, I learned what you, testify what you want, first of all.
We don't refer to the RSA.
That's right.
Well, can you just eliminate the RSA here and put in, as long as it meets, uh, building codes in the, in our town? I mean, or words to that effect, I mean...
Yeah.
Which would be true of any structure.
Yeah.
In that way, you eliminate the RSA problem that you were mentioning.
And, and if it's not done right, you can always go to the ZVA to get really, if something develops with the technology that makes this crazy, then it includes your case in the ZVA.
So, let's rewrite it to allow manufactured, manufactured housing consistent with building code regulations.
I like that.
How about Brookfield building code, Richard? Build, Brookfield building code. Remember, these are, this is the master plan, this is not binding, this is just...
Yep.
Well, even if you put in current building codes, that'll kind of progress as time goes on, you know, that'll be applicable.
I might get jumped again, like, yeah, we can do that, but...
I think codes are getting more and more stringent all the time. Not less so, you know, in my experience, I think they are. So, I think it would be a safe bet.
I keep on referring over to section E, the how we achieve it. Number one is review periodically the adequacy of building code regulations and revise them when necessary to reflect current construction standards.
What do we have?
So, that's all. I, I'm fine with allow manufactured housing consistent with current building code regulations.
I agree.
Thank you, Rich. Cluster housing, Brookfield desires to encourage the preservation of quality outdoor, quality open space and promote creative use of the land. The town should continue to pursue cluster housing provisions in zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations.
They consent on zoning, not a lot. Is that the same as farm development?
Well, usually you have a, a meeting house, you know, but if each home has its own space...
Yeah.
And sometimes they share a, a septic system. It would be, it sounds like a little town.
Yeah.
And they have, and they have a group leach field, and, you know, these process, and if, if it was solar, you know, they could have a set of, central set of solar panels which would feed all the homes in that cluster.
Yeah.
They're actually quite, quite well thought out.
Oh, okay.
Most of them.
I was thinking of something different. Thanks for explaining that.
Well, that's what I was gonna do with that Churchill, I'm gonna think of the son's name. Anyway, he had that lot down the corner, that corner lot that now that the older couple live in now. He was a retired teacher from Exeter. I think that's right. Anyway, his fifteen acres there, we subdivided it, and in fact, his son took two acres of it, but anyway, that was before there was any house there, that was fifteen acres, and I had the one next door, ten acres. We were gonna combine the two and do a cluster thing, but he got issued it, so he sold his parts and that kind of, that was the end of that. We had thought about, we're gonna do a alternative energy. We've got, eco, eco-friendly is what we were gonna, part of market. But it didn't go very far.
So, we're going with cluster housing, okay? Implementation, implementation strategies, how we achieve it, I just read the building code regulations. Two, assure the current code enforcement arrangements remain adequate. And then three, adopt standards to assure that seasonal homes that are converted year-round use meet all current building code standards. Kind of reiterates what we read on number two. We're all set there, we'll move on to two point oh nine, economic development.
Yes, tell you.
Introduction. The economic development section includes policies and implement, implementation strategies, identifying actions that assess and meet the region's goal of sustainable development derived from the economic strengths and weaknesses of the town and region. Policy goals, what we want, general, traditional home occupations, agriculture, forestry practices.
That is it?
That's it? Back to there?
We can have a discussion, Ed.
You know, put up a gas station on St. Albans? Both of them?
Identifying actions that assess and meet the region's goal of sustainable development. I have no idea what they're talking about, who the heck wrote that? That assesses, the economic development section includes policies and implementation strategies, identifying actions that assess and meet, assess and meet the region's goal of sustainable development. I have no idea.
That was pulled off a big master plan somewhere.
Yeah. Derived from the economic strengths and weaknesses of the town and region.
It's a general state?
Spike trial.
Yeah, you can almost get rid of the whole, whole thing, you only two point oh nine altogether. Well, there's nothing there, anyway.
I think we need to have this in here to provide guidance for the next decade of, because if we took this out, then we're pretty much saying we could put a gas station in town.
Or you're zoning as you can.
Right, but the master plan is where it starts, right?
Wouldn't a whole B applying a commercial zone, wouldn't that be a whole first step? Maybe something like a little blue light should be in there, I mean, we don't have a commercial zone. What we're saying, it would be desirable if we had one. We're not specifying here what's gonna go in it or where it's gonna be, but a commercial zone down someplace might be desirable.
Under policy goals, for B.
Or under economic development.
I, I know, but B is for policy goals, what we want, general. So, I'm saying, what you're saying sounds like it goes underneath there, because right now it just says traditional home occupations. What does that mean?
That's our economy around here.
Traditional, traditional, what does that mean?
Oh.
And that's, I'm just saying, it doesn't...
It might be cobble shops and, um, black sets.
Was there anything in the survey, was there anything in the survey that mentioned, um, creating a commercial zone?
I thought it was a lot of...
Well, was it against it? Yeah, that's what I thought. But it wasn't against anybody's home occupation?
No.
Let's take traditional off, just have home occupations.
I mean, I don't recall.
No, I don't either, I, I...
They didn't want box stores and...
They wanna keep it the way it is, is pretty much the consensus, I thought. So, what do we wanna do with this section, fellows?
Well, B is just saying that they don't want any conventional businesses in here. You can work out of your home, you can have a farm, and you can grow some trees.
Yep.
That's basically all they're saying, that you're allowed to do in this town.
I mean, it's not...
Well, that's what we want.
It's not really a place for a commercial zone, really, in this town, other than one or nine. I mean, where else would you put it?
Well, I think...
Camper on, tunnel down Deep Road.
I think the point that Rich is saying is that we should put it, if you put in there that we should look for a commercial zone, it doesn't mean we have to define it here. You're just leaving the possibility for people in the future to think, well, can we put one in? And where would it go? And how would that work? So, it's, it's not saying we want it, it's just saying, is, is it possible for the people in the future to think about?
See, what I, I don't like that it says, uh, traditional home, home occupations, agriculture and forestry practices. It doesn't sound like, agriculture, yes, home occupations, yes. But I don't know, does it have to list, does it have to list what they are? Isn't the goal, like, to encourage home occupations, that could be a goal? How, how are we supposed to put in a, in a master plan that we're, our policy goal, what we want is agriculture? I just don't know how that sounds.
Well, that's, we have all that zoning defining agriculture. Work, right?
So, we just have a plan on occupations?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's where I'm, kind of getting at. Well, so why should we, why should we be defining which ones? I mean, if you're at home and you're a CAD designer for shoes...
Right, right.
Very high-quality, expensive boots, and that's not agriculture or forestry practices.
Was there anything, was there anything in that questionnaire that went up? That would fit into this category? That people said they wanted?
I would, I, I get what you're saying with the home occupations.
Just dice-up the legal, um, law. And bring it down to home occupations.
I'm trying to think of how we can phrase it as if, uh, you know, you could say independent employment.
Good, um, good phrase.
What's that?
Good phrase, independent employment. Home occu-, slash all occupations.
Right.
I don't even know how you would define that, I mean, I work from home.
Right.
You know? I can go to the office maybe once a year, twice a year.
Yes, yeah, so you could say telecommuting?
Yeah, telecommuting, and, or, uh...
Right.
Remote something.
Yeah.
I don't even know how you would define it.
Well, you don't want to the phone, you can't, can't do it.
Right, right, right. You just said it, let me just strike the whole thing. Can't define what you can and cannot do, so I'll, just strike the whole thing.
Yeah, I think the whole thing, I think the whole thing needs to be abbreviated.
So, we don't, we don't, uh, you know, traditional home occupations, agriculture, forestry.
Well, it's all of this, all of it.
Right. So, I think what would be more important would be the introduction, is, is put our effort there and get rid of all this junk, and write something speaking to what we've just discussed, which is, you know, um...
Independent employment, home occupations.
Yep.
And search for a commercial zone within the town?
Where you gonna put it?
I mean, since the ordinance already encourages home occupations, then I would think it, it would be easy to, um, what am I trying to say here? And I think we could easily rewrite this to fit what is, we need to rewrite.
Yeah, I agree with you, absolutely. I'm just trying to, you know, independent employment, home occupations. I mean, we've been talking throughout this whole master plan about a rural farming community. So a reference needs to be, uh.
Made up in twenty minutes, so.
Made up in twenty minutes? Yes. I'll write something.
We'll come back to it.
Yeah. All right, so that's two point oh nine. Any number of comments?
Thanks everyone for working on getting the warrant articles all done on time. And get a good start on the year.
Good, thank you. Ed, any comment?
I'm gonna keep on the shot.
Why's that? Let's have a stop to the.
Okay, I'm sure it does. As soon as you say, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna go back.
All right, I'm gonna move on to John, so he can't, you're done.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm also.
Okay. We have our books. That's, that's all I have, which is great. So we adjourn, seven fifty-one. Next meeting is March eighth.
And for all the people watching, the town meeting is March twentieth, Saturday at two o'clock at the Paul School.
Yes.
That's a change from history, right?
Yep.
We're voting on the ninth from one to six. But two Saturdays later, the Paul School, two o'clock, the town meeting.
Yep. Town meeting is March twentieth.
Twentieth.
Two o'clock.
Did you post it yet?
It's on the website.
March twentieth at two o'clock at the Paul School?
Correct.
Yes.